Hi, all right, everybody, we're at the June 16, 2022 meeting of the Rockport Planning Board. Members who are present today are Peter Cutner, me and Tom Mekus. Harry Corzlin informed me that he is not going to be available, so it's just the three of us. We are a quorum. And Denise Donnelly is here as I guess the liaison from the Board of Selectmen. So, hi Denise.
Hi.
Welcome back. We miss you.
Thank you.
So anyway, we'll get started with the public comment, which we have at the beginning and at the end of each meeting about anything relating to planning. If you're here to comment about Six Stonehaven Lane, which is actually an open public hearing, I would ask that you wait until that is called because your comment will be more appropriately given at the time of that hearing. But if you have any other public comment about planning issues, now is one of the two times to use it to make your comment. And Kelsey, do we have anybody for that?
It doesn't, oh, okay, we have Toby. It looks like. Do you want to make a comment?
Thank you. Am I on?
Yes.
Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite Street. To start with, apologies from me to Tom Mekus. Speaking at the DPW Commissioners Meeting about stormwater, I said that your board had no expertise engineering on such subjects. I misspoke, and he corrected me on that. Indeed, you have somebody now who has the brains to read such permits, the stormwater permits, if they start to come your way. But 10 years from now, it might be a completely different planning board, and there wouldn't be anyone who would have that capacity. My thought was, while I was speaking to them, was that it's the DPW Commissioners who should have charge of the stormwater permits and the whole process, because whether or not the Commissioners have the expertise, usually one or more is an engineer, but that's by no means certain. Certainly, they have the director and the assistant director to turn to, so they would have somebody to turn to to read the permits written in what amounts to a foreign language. So although I was mistaken and apologize in the first instance, I am right about who should have charge of the permit. And unfortunately, Penny Pelzer is on the wrong track. I see Denise is with you, and she, when discussing it, remarked that we needed something to deal with stormwater runoff below whatever threshold is chosen, the perspective when being 7,500 square feet. I've been saying that for years, and that's something that your board should undertake. It's something that should go into the zoning code, not the code of bylaws, so that it would not apply to the town of Rockport, and it would not, you know, apply retroactively to all of the things which are violations now, which are unfortunate, but people inherited. I hope I've made it clear.
Yeah, Toby, you have this, wherever it ends up is gonna, it's still being on preliminary stages. And one of the things we do have in the bylaw and will be in the bylaw is that we're gonna, the planning board will be able to retain the services of consultants to review, you know, these applications. So that's, you know, that's part of the deal. But anyway, that's a long way off, actually. Okay, anybody, thank you for your comments. Anybody else?
That's everybody.
Okay, we'll go to the approval of minutes. We have the minutes. Mary has managed to complete the minutes of April 7th and April 21st. I guess Kelsey's working really hard, and she's already up to, what, May, Kelsey?
Yeah, I sent May 5th and May 19th to Mary today, so I owe you last meeting and tonight.
Yeah, that's great. So we're getting really, we're really getting caught up. Thank you, Kelsey, for that. Does, let's take the, for the April 7th and April 21st minutes. Any comments, additions, or corrections, additions, or deletions on April 7 minutes?
Yeah, I have one correction.
Okay.
At the bottom of page two, it's calling something seedy glass, and it's actually seeded, S-E-E-D-E-D.
I'm looking for that. Last paragraph on page two.
Last line on page two.
Oh, seated?
Seeded. And it occurs again in the first line of the third page.
How do you spell that?
It was S-E-E-D-Y, and I think it needs to be S-E-E-D-E-D, seed ed.
Oh, like seated, okay, yeah. Where's the other one that's needs correction?
The next line after that, which is on the top of page three.
From seeded to clear, okay.
That's it all.
Okay.
I had one correction. I am embarrassed to say, item two, my name is spelled wrong.
Oh, come on, Peter Cutner.
I'm picky. So, yeah, I don't even know how to pronounce it. Just the E and the R is switched.
All right.
It's correct at the top.
Yes.
Any other corrections, additions, deletions? There being none made, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 7, 2022 with the corrections as noted?
So moved.
Second.
By Tom, seconded by Peter. Roll call void. Peter?
Yeah, hi.
Tom?
Hi.
I'll vote to approve. So that's done. All right, let's go to the next set of minutes, which is April 21, 2022. And any additions, corrections, or deletions on that set of minutes? Why is the set of minutes? Okay, well, if there being none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 21, 2022?
Tom, move.
Second.
Okay, all in, all in favor, roll call vote, Tom?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
All vote in favor? And we're approved. So next item on the agenda is we have a special, we have, I'm sorry, a public hearing for project at Six Stonehaven Lane on behalf of the Whiteheads and the consultant they're using as Treehouse Design. There was, the public hearing remains open, meaning members of the public can comment, continue to comment on this. We have received an additional set of plans earlier this month. And I guess we should ask the applicant to explain what, what has changed, because there have been some changes made from the one we were discussing in our last meeting. And maybe you could put it up on the screen, gentlemen, so we could see what you're talking, everyone, what you're talking about.
Excellent. Thank you for hearing us tonight. My name is Ryan MacArthur. I'm an architect at Treehouse Design. This is Tim Thurman, owner of Treehouse Design. We're representing Ian and Leo Whitehead. They're here this evening, too. They're in California currently. So I would be happy to share my screen. Can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Well, yeah.
So we were here two weeks ago, and we continued that hearing. The four topics we talked about were architecture, lighting, drainage, and site drain. We, at that time, were aware that there were two neighbors that were interested in talking further about the site drain and the site drainage. So since then, we have met with those neighbors and developed some new concepts that are based on a collaborative effort. What we basically did was schedule a site walk that following Tuesday. We brought an excavator out to the site, and we brought the civil engineer, John Judd. We dug test pits at new locations that were being discussed in order to distribute the water infiltration to separate locations. We reviewed the soil conditions and the test pits, the water table. And then a little later that same day, we met with Rick Powers, the neighbor. We also invited Bill Pizzano to join us. Bill was not available to walk the site, but he asked that we follow up with him with updates. So at the site walk, we found two acceptable locations for drainage. One is the previous location, which if you're looking at this site plan, there's the approach of the driveway. It heads up to the garage and the house. But Bill Pizzano lives north, and as well as Steve and Rick Tranpowers. So there is the slope that runs to the back of the site, and that's where the drainage locations are. So drainage location one, an infiltration basin is proposed adjacent to the previous location. And infiltration two, which was proposed and located with Rick Powers, is on the other end of the site. The concept was to take, manage all the water, all the runoff of the building, and 50% of that goes to each basin. So all the water is managed via those two basins and split equally between them.
How does it, excuse me, two questions. What, so what's different between what you have now and what you had two weeks ago? And then how does the water get to these areas?
Two weeks ago, we had one location, one, one retention and infiltration unit here in this location. The request within the last hearing from Mr. Pizzano and Mr. Tranpowers was to distribute the water more evenly across the site and not consolidate it in one location. So that's why we broke out to a second location for an infiltration basin, so the water is not consolidated to one area of the site, but more evenly distributed. The water gets to those locations via four-inch hard pipe. So if you're, look, if you look here, you're starting to see an RD, a roof drain, so there are downspouts that are then hard piped across the site underground and piped to this proposed stormwater infiltration basin. Same thing for the location on the back here, hard piped out underground to the stormwater infiltration basin.
So these are, these are tied into these infiltration basins, or at least are tied into the roof drains, is that?
They are. And the surfaces of the structure that can create runoff, that water can't permeate through and go into the, go into the naturally into the soils like rain does, all that water that has the potential of runoff is collected and managed. Previously, it was not, you know, the system was not this size, and it wasn't managing this much water.
And who did the calculations to determine the water that would come off the roof or could come off the roof?
Yes.
Now, the basins?
John Judd is our licensed civil engineer. This is his stamped drainage plan. The plan we were looking at a moment ago was the architectural plan. It's a little easier to read sometimes. But this drainage plan also shows that same infiltration basin here, and the second location up here, it shows the test pits that were dug at those locations. There is a observation diagram discussing the soil conditions of the various test pits, where the water table is, what the soil is, what the capacity is of the soil to manage water. And then he provided the drainage calculations down here that discuss the size of the building, designing for a 10-year storm, six and a half inches per hour, and runoff and drainage sizing of it. He then followed up with that same vein. Let's remove this. With a letter. We requested that the letter be a signed letter from him, essentially, you know, an affidavit of sorts, which describes the calculations of the system, what it was designed off of. And so we have this signed letter from him, along with the drainage plan stamped with John Judd.
Is that part of what you submitted to the planning board?
It is not. We, we had, you know, quite fast in order to dig the test pits, schedule the meeting, review it with the neighbors, develop the drawings, and get them back to you within one week's time from that June 2 year. And so this letter came in after that June 2 hearing. We forwarded all the drawings and the letter to the neighbors, but we have not forwarded it to the board, being that our understanding was, you know, you prefer not to get new content, you know, once that one week deadline passes. But we do have this.
Day, what's the date on, I'm sorry, what's the date on the letter?
Let's see, June 12.
So it's pretty recent, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, he worked on it over.
Is it only the letter we don't have? The, we do have the plan?
You do have.
This is the plan he's referring to.
Yes, this is the stamped drainage plan, which discusses the size of the basins, the calculations for them, the observation test pits.
So, so the letter that others received had, okay, that's, at some point, we're gonna get a copy of that, I'm assuming, right?
Yes, I can send that up tonight.
All right.
So the, I'll continue on with some of the other collaborative efforts that were discussed.
You want to do that? Sure.
Yeah, please. One of the other elements of the design that was discussed with the neighbors, specifically Rick Powers, was interested in screening the hillside and improving the hillside that faces their property. So the neighbor's home is where my cursor roughly is off the page. This is the slope that is currently being discussed. And so what we discussed with the neighbor was the idea that we could take this existing slope, which is this dash line, and make an adjustment to the toe of the slope, and then a slight adjustment to the top of the slope, and use modest boulders to create natural pockets to do planting in. So this idea being a few boulders down here, you can create a planting bed with composted loam for native species, conifers, eastern red spruce, and we can create some, some screening for the neighbor. And then again, at the top of the slope, we can create some pockets where we can plant. And so if we take that section and look at the hillside, the idea is to create a natural terrain using some boulder retainage where you get pockets of planting. We're not building a wall of boulders or anything like that, but we're trying to create a more natural native planting along this hillside. And I believe Mr. Powers appreciated that, and it adds to the value of the landscape, making a pleasant kind of in-between zone between the properties. Another factor was we had to survey or locate all the existing trees down in this area with the intent that those trees will remain. We won't be taking them down. So those have all been noted on the site survey. So as this work is done, it's, we're confident we're not going to be disturbing any of the existing trees.
How's you referring to, just over the property? Is that the one that's just being built now?
It is, yes.
Anything else, gentlemen, that you wanted to, any new things you wanted to call the R?
We, we believe that, you know, the collaborative effort has resulted in an improved site plan, one that has a, you know, an investment in a better drainage plan, investment in a refined planting intent along that slope. And we're happy to review it further with the board, and and we hope that it is approved this evening.
Okay, well, is there anybody else in any, this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this revised plan?
I do have somebody with their hand up. Okay, you're unmuted. Can you just state your name and address, please?
Yeah, I think, am I, am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Okay, yes, thank you. This is Alan Cohen, and my, my wife Kathy Cohen. We are the butters on Straitsmith Way that you see to the immediate right of the proposed Stonehaven Lane, number 29 Straitsmith Way. The questions that I have are really, is a result of the changes in the plan, and what impact, if any, that Treehouse Design would see in the drainage that could impact our home on Straitsmith Way. You know, you've added a new drainage infiltration basin that is to, just to the front of our property, and I would think it's pretty close to the existing home on Lighthouse Lane. That's also an existing very wet area. So I'd like to understand what implications there may be to the homes on that side of the, of the, of the proposed Stonehaven Lane, number one. And the second question would be a similar request about trees. There is an existing screen now that was substantially cut back with our permission some time ago, but I would, I think that the commitment that the Whiteheads have made about protecting existing trees should be extended to the entire property, not just on one side of the property.
Why don't you, is that all, Mr. Cohen?
Other than whatever Treehouse would say about the existing slope plan, I do see that you nicely added borders and a break with proposed power residence. I don't have a same, whether there's an impact at all on the side of the, of the the area in front of the, of the pervious stone terrace, whether there'd be any, there or any change needed as a result of the other drainage changes that were made.
Tim Thurman, speaking. Thanks for your question, Alan. I think when we were at the site doing the test pit for this easternmost drainage basin, we were very cognizant of the fact that the elevation 44, which would be the highest point of that, the rim of that basin, so to speak, is about two feet below your driveway in that area. We were careful to look over there and get a good bead on the fact that any water that overspills this drainage basin is actually going to run in a northerly direction toward the Tranpowers property, where they've already installed a culvert beneath the driveway that they've built. So this water currently drains in that direction, it's going to continue to drain in that direction. So we were careful to be sure that this in no way was going to impact your driveway, Alan. And our feeling about the screening in that area is there's already a pretty robust natural buffer of trees between your, your driveway and this side of the Whitehead property. So honestly, we didn't focus on it and try to locate those trees because primarily we were dealing with, you know, what Rick Powers was asking for to make sure that there was robust screening between these two properties. But we'd be happy to extend, you know, the same idea that the trees between us, between Whitehead and yourself would remain.
I would add that the, this proposed home is fortunately located on a currently developed portion of the site, so no trees need to be removed to build the home. And there's no intent to remove any of the trees down in the forest at the current moment. The site plan review's requirement of maintaining trees of 24 inches or greater is something we'd observe, and generally also have no, again, no intent of going into the woods in the perimeter of the house and and taking down, you know, any trees.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification on the drainage. So the, you don't see an issue where the drainage would go, you're saying goes north? I'm a little, I'm a little directionally challenged. There wouldn't be drainage, it would go east from that point?
The retainage basin is at elevation 44, or infiltration basin. Your home is here. This is maybe your garage, I believe. It's not your, by the back. And so this is elevation 46, which is a ballpark at 20 to 25 feet off of your house, and the elevation goes up from there. So this location is two feet higher than the base, than the infiltration basin, and then up to 48, another two feet higher. So ultimately, the back of your garage, or even your, your lowest level is four to five feet higher than this base, this infiltration basin is.
You can also point out the 22 on the north side, where it flows to.
Yeah.
Is there with the sketch, the, the Powers sketch that was sent around earlier?
Okay.
Where the two 44s come together?
Over here at the 44s, yeah.
The left one on the, on the engineering drawing shows a 42. So it's a natural drop down.
Okay. Yep. Naturally, the hillside, the water is all naturally going, this northern direction.
Okay, all right. And, and that, just to clarify, because I really appreciate that, was very, very helpful. But the, the spot, the, the section between the new terrace going directly east, is that also sort of uphill to our, our place? I don't have, I can't read that.
The.
Where your mouth?
The, the natural terrain or elevation of the slope back there is elevation 54. Your property is, your level of the back of the house is maybe 48, 49. So the, these dashed contours here that are tight together, those are the existing contours of the site that wrap around and create the hill that faces your home. So those would be remaining.
Yes, well, it sort of drops into a gully, then it goes back up again.
Yes, there's very, all the water in that gully seems to track down in the same direction that, you know, north, that everything moves. So this.
Any more questions? It seems, seems like Mr. Cohen's questions have been answered. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Jason, I'm wondering, in the area where you're filling in the contour lines down to 48, over to the left of this.
Behind the garage?
No. Yeah, it looks like you, you've got like four trees that are going to be filled in, so those, I assume are gone. But the lowest of those lines, is that 40?
Trees behind the garage, which are not, those aren't existing.
Yeah, these three small plants here, that's just, those are proposed plant, you know, general planting concept. Those are not existing trees, those little three dots there.
And so the fill continues out under that existing tree on the 46 line, right?
No, this is existing 46. So just short of the tree root system, previously, we had a large So just short of the tree root system, previously, we had a large uh or larger um footpath that went down to the lower yard as just a safe navigable means to get from the upper yard down into the woods. Uh, and we discussed with Tran Powers that they'd like to see that tightened up and and more modestly placed against the the slope behind the garage. So these updates are are doing that, they're keeping that terrain adjustment tighter to the to the hillside. Uh, and we would be modifying just enough to uh to get down that footpath and stay tight to the hill. No intent uh of removing this existing tree or filling against it.
We are covering a little bit of the root system, but it looks like pretty minimal.
Yes, and we we would adjust that, uh, you know, actively in the field in the real world to make sure um that tree is healthy and and happy.
Well, it's kind of a guess where the roots go anyhow. Thanks.
Okay, well, you know, one of the things about the site, it's an unusual site. It's obviously had lots of earth brought in at some point before you, anybody here became involved with it. Um, and to I don't know what exactly they did, but it looks like the original, the current uh property condition is that they raised up the property quite a bit, and they created a very steep drop-off uh to the north. Um. But I I understand you're gonna cut, you're gonna kind of mitigate that, is that correct? You're gonna?
Relative to the hillside?
Make it more gradual, yeah, bring in more.
That's accurate. The the intent would be to take the the current slope and add a light amount of material at the bottom and some stones in order to to elevate small plant natural pollutants and to do the same at the top, uh, which essentially uh lessens the degree of the slope uh and gives a much more natural terrain to it.
Well, yeah, as natural as you can be. Um, okay. Anybody else has any comments?
I don't see anyone, Mr. Chair.
Okay, um. No, there being no further comments, and I don't I don't think we received anything in writing. Um, I'm gonna ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Well.
Uh, motion, um, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Peter, uh, roll call vote. Um, Tom.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
Although in favor also, the public hearing on this application is closed. Give me two minutes, I'll be right back.
Know any good jokes?
Stormwater infiltration jokes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So a civil engineer goes into a bar.
He infiltrates the bar.
I like that. Now, it's a it's a good project. We we we're now a net energy producer based on the new numbers of our uh performance metrics, so we're really excited about that.
I would.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good project, and the Whiteheads are um really enthusiastic about the high-performance nature of the construction we're proposing.
So is the, with all the um trees, does the solar, uh, where's your sort of window? Is it on all in the garage or?
Mainly the garage, and there's a little uh opportunities on the roof of the the wing of the building near the garage. The high point of the of the butterfly there.
Yeah.
He said it was an air source heat pump?
No, it's a uh, it's a ground source heat pump.
Oh, where where are your wells?
Right in front of the house in the driveway.
Standard place. How deep?
Well, we don't know yet.
Okay, I'm back. I gave you, and they told me to drink a lot of fluid, and I drank a lot of fluid.
What does that do to you?
Much information.
So, um, anyway, um, okay, we're, public hearing is closed. Is there anything else? The um any members of the board want to discuss um about this project? We can, what I would like to do is, if everyone has their zoning bylaw with them, um it would be good to go to page fifty-eight, which is site plan review. And it's the review criteria for minor and major construction projects, because this is the best way to kind of go through this and make sure we've covered all the bases. Um, everyone have that accessible?
I have so many versions, it's.
Yeah. Well, this is um.
Seven twenty-three.
Two thousand nineteen update, and then there's a two thousand twenty-one amendments.
I think so.
Tell me when you get a hold of that, if if you have it. I mean, I'll read it out, but.
You said page fifty-four?
Fifty-eight.
Shoot, I must have. I have a seven twenty-three, twenty nineteen.
Say that again, Peter?
I just I have one that says twenty-seven, twenty-three, twenty nineteen at the top.
Okay, seven twenty-three, two, yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Twenty-three, two thousand nineteen, correct.
I got the zoning bylaw with twenty-one amendments, that's the one.
Yeah, it has the amendment, but that doesn't really apply to what we're doing. Um, but it's the two thousand nineteen version does have the site plan review law, and if you're on page fifty-eight, it's the review criteria. This, this is a minor subdivision, a minor um construction project. So here are the standards that we want to, we could go through. Um. It says, as is reasonably practicable, meaning it's you don't have to do the impossible, you do what's re- what can be reasonably done. A proposed site plan shall achieve the following objectives. And then there are three items, four items minimize the following. So what? One is the disturbance to the natural and existing landscape. Two, the removal of trees of over twenty-five inches in circumference of breast height. Three, the length of removed stone walls, and four, the volume of stormwater flow from the site, soil erosion, and the threat of air or water pollution. So if we go through each one of those, we can talk about, does this uh site plan minimize the disturbance to the natural and existing landscape? That's the first question.
I think it has been minimized over the course of these meetings where the revisions have been made.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else have any?
I'm good with it.
Okay. So the next one will be the removal of trees of over twenty-four inches in circumference of breast height. I didn't see that that it seems like the applicant uh pointed it out, and am I correct, gentlemen, that you're not going to be removing any trees of that size? Or you're gonna at least minimize?
Uh, yes, I was correct, sorry, we're muted ourselves. Uh, we will not be removing any trees of that size. Uh, and or at least minimal minimizing it, as you said, but no intent to remove any large trees.
Okay, and um yeah, are you removing any stone walls?
No, we're not.
Okay. And then finally, and this is the one that really applies here, the volume of stormwater flow minimize the volume of stormwater flow from the site, soil erosion, and the threat of air or water pollution. So, um, you know, item four is something that we've had a lot of discussion on. Does anybody want to discuss that e- uh more?
I I actually want to just sort of say, I think this is a a good above and beyond kind of solution, because generally, when we look at bigger footprints and more roof, we immediately react to, oh, there's less surface to be infiltrated, but when we're talking about storm events and and water sheeting off the site, this actually is going to capture more of that stormwater. We're now diverting it into two of these infiltration basins. So the bigger house is actually, in a sense, protecting sheeted water that would have ordinarily just raced off the site in any direction when there's when there's a strong storm event, so. Uh, I think in a in effect, this bigger roof, which is acting as a butterfly shape as a capture, is actually holding more water besides, you know, and taking it to those two infiltration ponds, so there should be less surface sheeting than the last property had.
Yeah.
Besides the fact it's got the basins.
Yeah, to your point, Peter, I don't, you know, this site is existing, it is what it is now. I'm sure there's some 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 significant runoff now because of just, we've all gone there and seen it.
Yeah.
Um, the soil that surround immediately surrounding the house seems very hard-packed. Um, and, you know, a lot of that water is going to end up down that drop-off. So you're right, I mean, this is a bigger house. It's got bigger roof areas, but at the same time, there are these mitigation measures that were that have been taken uh in two separate locations, the and plus the trees, which should um help in that regard. I don't, and plus, I don't think anybody, you know, none of the neighbors have complained about that. We haven't heard any real any opposition to what's being done. Um, so it seems like they've done, they've complied with items one through four. Uh, we can go through the Roman numerals, the other ones below that. Maximize, some of them don't even apply, maximize pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular access. Um, I don't think that's even an issue here. Minimize the obstruction of scenic views from public locations. Um. I, again, don't think that's an issue here. This is on a really, really tiny road. Um. That I don't think there's a view from the road anyway. Maybe there will be from the house, I'm not sure. Minimize the visibility of parking, storage, or other outdoor service areas that could be viewed from public areas or developed residential properties. Again, um, I haven't heard anything that to indicate that's even a concern here. And it has been a concern with other applications, but not necessarily this one.
I think the garage is the only support building, and it's meets the number six, which is the architectural, it's upgraded to the architectural features of the house.
Yeah, yeah, go, I got, just going to number five quickly. Require that outdoor lighting comply with the town's outdoor lighting bylaws. Tom, I think you've looked at that pretty carefully, and you're you're satisfied with that.
Yes.
Good. Uh, six, uh, Peter, you were saying use of architectural features are in harmony with existing buildings in the immediate vicinity. I don't know what how one could be in harmony with the existing buildings. Really?
I was referring to the fact that the garage doesn't appear as a support building, it's in harmony with the rest of the building.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm I'm thinking, you know, around the neighborhood, but there's so many, it's such a hodgepodge of architecture that unless you built a hodgepodge building, you'd be, you know, you wouldn't be in in sync with them. Um. Require the use of landscaping and other outdoor features that will enhance the visual quality of the site. I think the applicant has said that, you know, they've shown that they're going to be doing that.
Agreed.
With the trees. Um. And then, um. Yeah, min- minimum, I don't think number eight really applies to us. This is more of a commercial or industrial criteria.
We we did agree at the last meeting, they would come from South Street, right?
Well, I I don't know if we put any condition on their construction, how they were going to manage that. I'm just thinking more eight really applies to, um. You know, that's like a commercial or that standard is really intended for a commercial or industrial site, you know, hours of operation.
Yeah.
Dodor, dust, vibration. Um, are you, you know, I don't know if we can. I don't, what are you saying, Peter?
I just know it came up last time and.
I don't think number eight is about construction.
I don't think it is either, so.
Maybe it should be, but it, I don't think.
Oh, you're talking about limiting hours of operation of the user itself.
Yeah. And then for nine is uh provide stormwater management plans for construction of roads and driveways. Um, do you have anything on your plans about a driveway and you're putting, assuming you're putting a new driveway into this property?
The driveway that that comes off of Stonehaven Lane is a gravel driveway. Uh, and as it extends up to the existing house, the new home is placed uh roughly in that same location. Uh, the garage is in addition to the side of that existing prop house. Uh, so our new driveway, as it arrives at the home, is a little larger. Uh, the site plan drawings show it as a gravel uh stone driveway uh which allows water to naturally percolate right into the right into the soil, no runoff. Um, and uh the additional area to it, you know, we're not relocating the access to the home to another side of the site, we're building a new road into the house. Uh, we're using that existing road, maintaining it, uh, and just expanding a little bit the footprint up at the home proper.
Yeah, okay, so um what I'm hearing, was that Tim?
That was Ryan.
Oh, Ryan, was that you're gonna use the area, the existing driveway for your driveway? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's the takeaway.
Yeah, okay. Um. Okay, and I don't know if the Department of DPW, I don't think federal law would apply to this driveway, and I don't know if the DPW has any interest in it. Um, haven't heard anything. Ten is provide adequate access to the site structures for fire and public safety equipment. Well, this is an existing site. Um, existing house, so um, the access is what the access is. Um, it's not like we're getting a new uh long driveway or a new road or anything like that, that would be an issue. We would need something from the fire department saying that it's adequate. And then the last is uh, item eleven is provide adequate utility and wastewater disposal services. Again, I don't think that's um that really applies to a single-family residential property. So those those are the criteria. I think the uh the applicant has submitted, you know, pretty detailed uh submissions, and we've got through the criteria, and we've addressed, they've addressed all of them as far as I'm concerned. I don't know if anybody else has any opinions about this, um, any concerns about any approval that we might want to give or any conditions or anything like that? Obviously, one of the conditions is that the app that the the plans that were submitted are bec- become part of the site plan uh decision, so they are what our factors are going to be looking at to that there's compliance with the site plan, you know, every, that's why everything's got to be on the plan. So anybody have any other conditions other than the generic conditions we are, we always attach to site plans? Um.
No, I think they've they've agreed to everything. We uh wanted to put it in the plan.
I agree.
Okay, so given all that, uh, does anybody have a motion to move the um the plan as submitted uh last week from um the Six Stonehaven Lane uh project? As per the spec- as per the specifications on those plans and um including lighting, drainage, landscaping, et cetera.
Uh, do we need to incorporate that letter that we hadn't received yet?
Oh, good, good, good catch, Tom. Um. When are we gonna get that letter?
I just sent it, actually.
Okay, good. Great, we're gonna, that's a good catch, Tom. What we're gonna do is incorporate that June twelfth letter um into the uh site plan approval. So again, that will be just part of the the entire document. the the entire document. So it'll be the set of plans that were submitted, what in June? Uh, we was, we received them June June ninth, two thousand twenty-two, and then we have a letter of June twelfth, two thousand um twenty-two that will be incorporated. Um, okay. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve the uh this site plan application with uh with those documents as part of the uh site plan approval?
I'm waiting for my senior.
Oh, I was gonna let you out this way.
Don't jump over.
So moved.
Okay, I'm so moved. Who's making the motion?
Here.
Peter uh Peter moves to approve this cycle and application.
I second it.
Seconded by Tom. Uh, all in favor, roll call vote, Peter.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
And I'll I'll vote to approve also. That's three twos zero. The site plan is approved. You'll be getting a written decision. Uh, folks, uh, within the next couple of weeks, which is really the official document that will be the basis for the approval. Okay?
Great.
Any questions?
No, thank you. We appreciate the uh time.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think it uh it uh added value to the project and that's a good thing.
Yeah, that is always good. Glad to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, where I think we're done with um Six Stone Haven Lane. So um thank you, folks. So let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item uh four. And um, all right. This is my my attempt with my kind of limited ability to manipulate documents in Word. Um, what I did was I took what was Article B. Uh, I took the latest version that we got from um M A P C post town meeting. I took Article B and I broke Article B into um um several separate separate articles, starting with Article A and Article J. These are, all I did, I didn't oh, didn't modify any content, but I did break them up into what I thought. And and it's not the last word, if anybody has any other thoughts, would be logical areas of division so that when we go back to town meeting for approval, we have, you know, several discrete areas that are separate articles that can be discussed and voted on by the public. Um, and that way, it's probably going to be easier for them to digest. And also, if indeed one or more of the articles doesn't get two thirds vote, then it's not, may not be the end of the world for the rest of them. You know, with hindsight, uh, Article B may have been just too much stuff. Or the public, the general public, especially people who haven't been following what was going on to digest. Um, but that's okay, you know? This was a pretty big reach. So, all right. So what I've done is this. I'll just go through it really quickly. Okay, turn Article A, which is the first article, is the um, the table of contents, but that can always change. Um, and Article A will be the general purpose and all the definitions will be one article. Article B would be the nonconforming buildings and uses. They are.
So you didn't, did you not, you didn't write Article B? The copy I have.
Yeah, it has, have it on it. I'm looking right on it, looking right.
Fourteen.
It's there, Peter.
Okay.
Fourteen.
Page fourteen, you say?
Yeah. Okay, Articles.
Oh, I see. You just didn't do it in the table of contents.
No, no, I didn't. I didn't do anything except in interject these different articles. And it took me enough time to do this. I did a mess with the table of contents. I'd maybe pulling my hair out because all this stuff is coded. And, you know, you just very hard to manipulate. Even Frank, you know, was sometimes having difficulty with this. Um,
The effort to get the index on the right is a narrow table over there.
Yeah, that was uh we probably could have done without that. But uh anyways, there. So Article C is um establishment of districts and um the zone, the various zoning districts and what's allowed. That's would be Article C. Article D would be the area and dimension requirements. So that's a different uh thing. Article E would be, excuse me, parking. Parking would be E. F would be the special regulations. This is, you know, excavations, raising of animals, uh, you know, all these kind of miscellaneous things, fences. Um, and then Article G, which I'm sure Tom might be interested in, is the coastal floodplain district. That's its own article. Uh, Article H is the um is actually more than one because I think we have the large scale ground mounted solar volt- photovoltaic installations. I don't think there were any substantive changes in that.
No.
Um, section.
No.
At all. And then finally, Article J is enforcement. So those would be the um
Skip guy.
What?
Did you skip over Article I?
Oh. Did I? Did I miss I? Oh, maybe I did. Did I have an I?
I is here for removal of earth materials.
I know my alphabet. Um.
After H and before J.
It looks like Roman one.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay. Actually, yeah, I'm sorry. I did. I did miss that. Removal, removal of earth materials. Um, you know, some of these uh you know, have some really small changes to them. Um, so they should be like no brainers. Um, but anyway, that's that's what I have so far. I mean, it could be, it could be diminished. I have to say we could actually, now that I'm looking at it again, we probably could shrink it a little because a couple of these sections don't really have any changes at all. I can't imagine. Um, but there you have it. And that's what I took a stab at. And like I said, nothing of any substance was was done. Um, so.
I think it's a, it's a logical law splitting of of things and some are going to be easier than others because there's
Can have them.
Little to be concerned with.
Yeah.
I did some changes I wanted to make, but you said we could do that at uh another meeting, I hope.
Yeah, I I what what I envisioned here is first of all, I I think I've got to try to get some help with the um formatting because it's so, you know, we can't use the same formatting that was used before. And then, like, to your point, Tom, about the coastal um zone district, what I suggest that you do is if if anybody has any changes that they think should be made, um, pull that, pull that out from all of these and make your changes separately. Don't don't take the document that I sent you and start changing because.
They have a copy with our initials after it.
Yeah, that would be like hopeless. You know, we we'd never know. We've got to really be careful to know what what change was made at what time. So if if you have any interest in in doing any of that, um, what I'm going to try to do is get this cleaned up a little bit. Um, so we really will have a working document and and all, so we can move forward.
As much as you hate to do it, I think at some point, we have to clean up the table of contents because that's what people will look at first.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Why there's ten things and what's in each of the.
Yeah, I agree with you. And and I, you know, these tabs on the right hand side are total pain in the neck. But yeah, we're, it's all going to be cleaned up, Peter. I I
Yeah, yeah.
But just, this was just an attempt to kind of break it down into, I think, another or different articles that I believe people will be able to understand them better. And I think when we go back, they'll all pass by two thirds. There there would be no reason not to, you know?
We got fifty-eight percent as it was.
Yeah.
It's even confusing. So I think we can, if I'm still a fan of the special town meeting as opposed to cramming in with the other stuff. But I think if we got ten of these, it's worth spending a little more time explaining stuff to each person. It to, you know, to a group as you go through that PowerPoint show.
Well, you're you're right. And um we're not, I I talked with Mitch about this. We we are definitely not going to be on the uh regular fall meeting agenda. There's too much there already. Um, which is fine, but we could do subject to the approval of the Board of Selectmen, we could do a a um a spe- another special town meeting just for this, you know, and get this done, which I agree. I think that might be a good idea. Um, so well, let's work toward that. Yeah, I I'd like to, obvious reasons, we need to finish this job because we can't leave these. We can't leave this stuff the way it is now, you know?
And if you don't do it in the special time, it pushes it to spring and there won't be room at the spring meeting.
I know. It's crazy. We 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 really need to do it as special town meeting and it's probably going to be this fall. And um, so we, you know, really, we've got to get working now.
Yeah, and we'll automatically have the people who are interested in this issue as opposed to people who are there for other reasons. You know, when it's the special meeting. And I was pretty impressed. That was a pretty good turnout.
It was a good turnout. It was, so.
And will give us a little more chance to answer questions.
What do you, Denise, you're sitting here. What are your thoughts?
The only concern that I have is a lot of articles. Um, and so, you know, I can imagine in a conversation with Bob Visnick where he might suggest that you group them. Um, and so what you were saying about um, you know, maybe trying to reduce the number for them, don't have very many changes in them. I think the more you can do that, the better. Um, if there's nothing substantive that's changing, you know, maybe maybe fewer articles, I think, would be better.
I I agree with you and I'm gonna, I'm gonna revisit that.
Yeah.
Cut much easier to cut down than the, you know. And, oh, yeah, I I could, I, as I was just going through this, I saw, you know, we could combine a couple of those with no problem.
Yeah, yeah.
There's just nothing in the, and I didn't even have the um um, the water supply protection overlay district.
Yeah.
I I uh emailed Eric Hutchins, who's is, you know, supposed to be working on that and I, he's not going to be ready. Um, but I want that to hold back the rest of, because this
It's important to get this done. Right.
Okay, well, um, I will work on this further uh and try to try to clean this up. Um, and report back at our next meeting. Meanwhile, if somebody like Tom has a strong interest in some provisions, um, then this is your time to start working on.
Well, I I sent you the list of what I'd like to change.
I I didn't even look at it, Tom, I have to tell you. Just, you know, but you know, it was just something that if you want to talk about it at another meeting and and go through it, and then, you know, we'll have to do it, we'll have to do another public hearing and we'll go through all that again.
Do we need another public hearing in any event, don't we?
Well, we're gonna have to, sure, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. All right, that's all I have on that.
Do we have a target for when we'd like to have a special meeting?
Not yet. Um, Denise, you know when the regular, the fall meeting is?
Usually September, early September.
Yeah, I would say maybe, you know, I'm, I have to talk with Mitch. Obviously, it has to be approved by your board, so maybe October, uh, do another special meeting.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we we got to get, we got to get working. We don't have M A P C anymore to help us. So it's gonna be up to us and Town Council apparently is going to be involved, so.
September twelfth is town meeting on my calendar.
Yeah, so let's say thirty days after that. I'm just, and I'm just throwing that out. I have no idea. Really need to nail that. That's one thing we have to nail down because what I like to do is to work backwards. In other words, get a date and say, okay, we've got two months to do this. We've got one month to do that. And then we we all know what we have to do when. So that'll be the, one of the things we do, I I do between now and our next meeting. Alrighty, unless anybody has anything else on that point, I'm I'm done. Um, member items, five. Any? Any member items?
I can mention, go ahead, Peter.
Um, I got my information on the CPC.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so they've sent me meeting notes from January, February, March, April, May. Um, so I started taking a look at those. Um, my biggest question with the group here are just, you know, we we you talked a little bit about whether I'd be ready to vote on these or wanted to vote on them or whether it was important to our group to vote on them. I'm a little feeling now that I've read all the meeting notes, I maybe need some warm up time before I, you know, go s- go strong on doing actual voting for it. I'm taking over for you, Denise. Are you still on it because of, as a, oh, okay.
No, I can't.
But is that critical or not? This was the question I was, wanted to raise with you all.
I have no idea what's on their agenda, so I don't, I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, you know, I mean, there's what, twenty things that get money and I'm not familiar enough yet with, quite frankly, any of them.
So what you're saying is that you're not, you don't.
I'm going to participate, but I don't think I should.
You don't feel comfortable voting?
Yeah.
And when do they vote? When are they, when's that coming up?
Next week.
Oh, okay.
Next week, yeah.
Well, I mean, that's that's up to you, Peter, you know?
Yeah, it looks like a sm- deeper. I was a little casual when I talked to you. It's a steeper learning curve that deserves to be gone through before I, you know, casually weigh in over on one thing over another.
Okay. I mean, I I don't know what, I don't.
Well, Phil seemed to have the same question.
Yeah, I can't tell people or you or anybody, or this board can't tell anybody, well, you must vote.
Okay.
You know, if you don't feel comfortable doing it, feel comfortable. Okay. So, but thank you for the update. Any any other member items?
Yeah, let me mention the uh presentation by Kami Peterson of M A P C.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, last night at the Gloucester Clean Energy Commission meeting. It's not very interactive. They run like a webinar, so not a lot of the public participation. But uh Kami made a uh presentation of some recommendations to change Gloucesters zoning uh for climate considerations. And they were primarily addressed at energy production, not so much about the flooding aspects of it. But uh I forwarded her slides and there may be some things in there that we might want to consider. And uh Kami also mentioned that they have a uh a net zero guidance page on the M A P C website that we want, might want to start paying some attention to since that's what town meetings said we should be doing.
Yeah. Okay.
I was curious, um, one of the things we talked about with M I was curious, um, one of the things we talked about with MAPC during our own nuts and bolts section of Article B was not having definitions for things that we don't regulate. And we, remember, we eliminated it too. So I didn't understand because it's like fifty percent of that things with definitions to add to the zoning. And I'm not a hundred percent sure what the value of that until we have regulations that regulate those things we define. The use regulations and the, uh, dimensional stuff were worth talking about.
Are you, are you talking about our, the draft zoning bylaw?
Well, no, I'm talking about what, what she gave us that was recommend, well, what you gave us that was a copy of her recommendations to Gloucester was half, the second, the whole second half of it was just definitions to be added to the zoning. Like what's a blue roof? What's an electric vehicle? What's a eco roof? What's a charging station? But the rules we were working with when we were doing the nuts and bolts was take out definitions that we don't have a regulation regarding. So, why we would add all these things until we added a regulation.
That's right.
Yeah, I agree with that. Okay.
Um, one of, one of the things just occurred to me, um, in attending the government and bylaw committee meetings where they're doing the general bylaw revisions, they talked about, um, Toby's, uh, I don't know what word to put on it, insistence perhaps that we keep the dates for when individual things were amended. What they are proposing is to put that in, uh, at the end in an appendix. And maybe that's a good compromise, so it doesn't really clutter up the text.
Yeah, no, that, that's, that could work.
Yeah.
Sure, that could work, yeah.
Otherwise, we're kind of making it a research document rather than as-
Yeah, absolutely. No, I was thinking of having that, of doing that too, so.
Good.
Okay, um, any other member items? Otherwise, we'll move to the public comments.
Yeah.
Okay, public comments.
I do have Toby with his hand up. Toby, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Um, into the appendix with the, uh, dates things change would be fine as long as it's an integral part of the whole document and can't later be discarded uh, without a vote. That's satisfactory. Uh, you didn't mention, uh, your discussion on Article B that you need the dispensation of the Attorney General uh, to bring it back again within the two years.
No, I think, we don't. If, as long as we have a, you, you don't need a dispensation of the Attorney General if you write a recommendation, if the board recommends it. I think that's the language. I've read it over. That's not correct.
Well, that was what you said earlier, so if I am incorrect, um, I attribute it to you.
I don't, I don't think I've said that because I never, I have never thought that, Toby. But anyway, go ahead.
That was what was said. Uh, at any rate, you seem to be on the right track dividing it up into, uh, separate sections. Um, what Denise said about consolidating it, uh, I think takes it in a different direction, although she said, and this is the key part, and what would make it acceptable, that a separate section for every part where there are substantive changes. Uh, no one other than yourselves is going to care about the clerical changes uh, or wish to dispute about them. Um, maybe I do on the dates, but no one else will take any notice. The key thing is that, that, uh, you should explain, uh, each section where there are substantive changes so that the voters, if they've not had the chance to review it, and as you're well aware, many will not, uh, know what they're buying. And the other thing that is key that we didn't have last time is with the tables, um, where you're changing them, the area requirements, the parking requirements, all of those things. It needs to be projected up on the screen, both the version that you're, that you're adopting and the previous one that you're asking us to be rid of so that people know what they're buying and can see readily whether, uh, they like what they're getting as opposed to what they have. Uh, if you're not doing that, I would, you know, cry foul. It's just not a fair presentation. And, you know, if it isn't done and explained there, uh, you know, it isn't going to be done at all because most people will arrive cold, uh, having not even read the warrant. So, I mean, it's a, uh, more of a burden for you. You spoke of, of your difficulties pulling it all together uh, and you've put a lot of time and thought into it. You might consider how difficult it is for those who have not put any time or thought into it, but who do care about the results. Does that make sense?
Uh, not really. But I, I hear what you're saying and, you know, it's your opinion.
And it's also possible with anything that's presented all lumped together uh, to ask the moderator to divide it into parts. And if the moderator declines, if ten people are asked that it be done, Articles, you know, can and will be divided. It shouldn't be necessary to fight over it.
I don't think it will when we're, when we're finished. I think it'll be, uh, pretty evident about what's been done and, um, you know, we'll also have public hearings. Uh, so, yeah, there'll be a lot of advance notice for people who want to pay attention to pay attention. People don't want to pay attention till they get to a meeting and then decide that they want to try to read sixty or seventy pages all at once. Um, that's going to be difficult for them. It's the way it is. So it's one thing if you're reading, you know, two lines or two sentences that are being changed. But if you're looking, if you're going to be talking about, you know, substantial changes in multiple pages, you can't possibly educate everybody uh, at, you know, a town meeting about everything that's been done. It's, it would be, it would be unfair to those people who actually did, you know, educate themselves in advance. And, you know, we'll do what we've done in the past. We did, last time, we posted everything on the website. We had copies of the documents in the town hall and the planning board. Uh, there were letters written to summarize them. So we, we did a lot to try to educate people, uh, certainly well before the town meeting. And I think we'll, you know, people will be educated before this thing too, but let's, I, all I say is, Toby, let's wait a little while and see how things go. You know, this is a very preliminary discussion about this issue. I appreciate your comments. And, you know, we'll, we'll take them to heart.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jason, I, I agree. It would be great if we could use the projector to display more information to make it more immediate when people were directing their attention to, say, a table. Unfortunately, those projections in the, in the gym were not very good. One side was, was the content and the other side was the voting. And then in the back of the room, they reversed them and some people said they couldn't see, so we're sort of-
Yeah, you know, look, that's one of the, that's a, a problem that's inherent with these meetings.
Yeah.
And that, anywhere. But, you know, inside, outside, you name it. Um, they are not set up for the use of technology. The, the tech, technological ability of the town is way behind what it could be. And, and it defeats some of the things that Toby was talking about because you just can't do what was suggested. Because we don't have the media to do it. And, and that isn't going to change. We're stuck with what we have. At least for the foreseeable future. So.
I think having the best possible printed copy is, is, uh-
Yeah, but you know, fine, you have, you have a hundred and fifty pages of documents printed out per person. And they show up at the meeting. I mean, realistically, is someone going to really read that at the meeting for the first time? I don't think that's going to work.
Can we leave out the parts that don't change?
Leave out what?
The parts that don't change.
Parts that don't have any-
You know, uh-
The presentation could, you know, even if the copy doesn't.
If there are no changes, there's no reason to put them in the warrant, you know? But if there are changes, even if they're insignificant changes, um-
That's the difficulty. We're dealing with a hundred and fifty page document. We're not dealing with a hundred and fifty pages of changes. So we, we're going to have to go through the effort of just pulling out the things that have changed and making a slide with big letters, yellow highlights or whatever.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try-
Make sure people read it.
You know, this is, this is probably more, I can say this. This is more than any department or, or board has done at any town meeting in terms of trying to get things changed, you know? Usually, usually it's a little section here or there, or a new this year or new there that, but there's, there had, and you know what? Maybe that's the reason why there hasn't been a comprehensive zoning change in the town of Rockport for all these years because doing it is so darn hard.
I feel like we need to kind of do the executive summary up as early as possible, like the same, you know, sixty or seventy words you would say to introduce it before we go through it. We ought to write for each of the ten or nine sections.
Yeah, well, you know, I-
And that would be like the executive summary that would guide people ahead of time. And you decide to then dig in on section seven or dig in on section three.
If they're interested, we can, we can do that, sure. Okay, well, just in case we didn't have enough to do.
Toby has his hand up again.
Well, we take one comment. And, uh, so Toby has had two separate comment periods already. Anyway, well, we'll come back to this later. I'm sure we'll be talking about it more if time for anybody to comment in the future. In fact, we'll be talking about it again in two weeks. Uh, any other public comments? Right, um, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Well, moved.
Second, motion by Tom, seconded by Peter. Um, all in favor, roll call vote, Peter. Tom?
Hi.
And all vote in favor, meeting adjourned at seven fifty-five. Um, Denise, thank you for attending.
Sure.
Nice to see someone from the-
From our past.
At our meeting, from our past, which is even better, so. Well, we'll be-
Be careful, you'll go home next time.
What's that?
I said, be careful, you might get hermed next time.
No.
You want somebody from your past.
I'll probably, I'll probably want to come to, uh, here, just a question, um,
Yeah.
To get to talk about a new special meeting date. Should I just get, come to your board and?
Um, talk to Mitch, talk to Mitch, yeah. Yeah, I'll mention it at the next Board of Selectmen's meeting.
If, if we know ahead of time, can it, can we have a preview at the fall meeting, just an announcement that the public hearings are so and so time and the special meeting? It'd be nice if we get as much advance notice out as possible. You know, even if-
Well, yeah, right now, we're just trying to get a date.
Yeah, but if we got it, you know, that, that you could then make a five second pitch at real town meeting.
Yeah, that would be fine, sure.
Yep.
Okay, uh, well, we had a, there was a motion adjourned pending, uh, and, uh, meeting's adjourned at, um, eight fifty-seven. Thank you.
Seven fifty-seven.
Good night, all.
Eight, seven fifty-seven, thank you. Good night.
Good night, all.
Night, all.
Thank you, Kelsey.
You're welcome. Good night, everyone.
Take care.